I want to call to order the March nineteenth, regular city council meeting. It is six P M. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge remains as follows. United States of America, in the true republic which expands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. On the next slide, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, on one state, under God, one and individual.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for, for public comment. Does anybody want to, does anybody want to talk about anything? Okay, then we won't. Okay, one, item one point one, Mayor City Council and our members of city, city staff may make announcements about city or community events.
Upcoming events and happenings, we have trash rashes Saturday, the March twenty-third. Check-in begins at eight thirty, come by and at least get a hot dog from Seabrook Rotary. The Easter excursion is next Saturday, March thirtieth, from nine to eleven at Major Park, always a good time. And finally, Monroe Field Splash Pad opens on Monday, April first. The DF ninety-five Remote Controlled Sailboat Regional Championship is Friday, April nineteen through Sunday, the twenty-first, at Main Street in Old Seabrook. The Trail Adventure is Saturday, April twentieth, from nine to eleven, at Seabrook Wildlife Refuge and Park. Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department Open House, you should stop by and say hi, Saturday, April twentieth, from ten to three P M., at the, coincidentally, the fire department. Keels and Wheels happens Saturday, May fourth, and Sunday, May fifth, that's at Lakewood Yacht Club, always a good show as well. Is there anything I've missed?
Anybody else, council? Okay, item two point O, presentations. Presentation of a quarterly update of the city of Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department. Nathan.
Good evening, how are y'all?
How are you, Ben?
City Manager Gail and I decided would be a good idea for us to come up here quarterly, if not monthly, just so we can bridge some gaps, since we all have the same understanding of the fire department that we actually own as a city. And so tonight, I was going to discuss the apparatus that the fire department owns. Before I start with the apparatus, I shouldn't say the fire, the fire department owns, we all own together, the citizens, the city council, and the organization. We're almost at three hundred calls this quarter, we're at two ninety-three, in fact, today, which is an extremely large volume of calls for a volunteer fire department. But thankfully, we have a lot of members who really have engaged our EMS and operate our first responder program, which about seventy percent of those calls are first responder medical calls, in which we help EMS, sometimes we go before, let's say, if our EMS is busy, we go to a scene as a first responder, waiting for another ambulance to come in and back us up. In the month of February, seven of those calls that we had, we had ninety-nine calls in February, seven of them, we actually were driving the ambulance or put volunteer medics in the back of the ambulance to assist with the medics, because the patient was so serious and they needed help. So we're very thankful as a city and the citizens and as a fire department that we have that level of service today. So let's roll right into the fire apparatus. I guess before I do that, do you have any questions about the calls for service and kind of how we operate? My next-
How does it compare to last year?
So last year, we ran thirteen hundred, and we're right on, we're doing about a hundred a month, so twelve to thirteen hundred again, is what we're, you know, planning for. That's a lot, but we have ways we can back that out if we need to, and we'll discuss that in the future if it becomes a problem, but it has not become a problem yet, and we continue to answer our calls. And our great dispatchers are here, too, we also have backup plans, because we have so many calls for service, that if three minutes goes by, we immediately call KIMA, three more minutes goes by, we immediately call Nassau Bay. Thankfully, we haven't had to do that in a long time, but there are plans in place in case the calls don't all get answered.
Do we, Nathan, do we know how many are mutual aid calls?
I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but we average about ten to fifteen mutual aid calls a month, us going out-
Right, yeah.
-to Nassau Bay and KIMA primarily. Any other questions about calls for service? Next presentation, I'll do a little bit more about our response model and how, why we do what we do in the fire service and in Seabrook. But I wanted to show you, twenty years ago, we decided that the city should own some of the infrastructure, and that was in two thousand four, two thousand five, and I wanted to show you pictures of actually what you own as a city and our citizens, and what we operate for you. So I'm ready to roll. That's the newest pumper right there. To most of y'all and the commoners, they all look like fire trucks, they, some of them have a lot of differences, but that's for the person who has a real passion for it and really knows what they're looking at. But this would be your typical fire truck, that is a fire engine, it's a pumper, it has a tank of water, it has a pump in it, that's the one we purchased in two thousand and fifteen, and replaced the two thousand and four rig, and that is the newest one. And we can roll to the next one. The next two are sister pumpers that we purchased in two thousand and four, the city of Seabrook owns this one, and this is the one that we have already selected to replace, that y'all voted on last city council meeting to replace this one. That's its sister right there, that's the only engine that we own as an incorporation. You own the first two, this is the last one, and probably the last one forever unless we change the model that we have today, that the actual Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated owns, and it's basically becoming a reserve or a parade truck, and we'll have to work through probably another five years, when we get that replacement truck, what we'll decide to do with this. So, just a side note on that reserve comment, we actually get credit points for having a reserved truck through the I S O Services Rating Office. This one here, the first three you saw were all very similar trucks, we tried to spec them the same, we tried to put all the buttons in the same place, we tried to put all the valves in the same place for commonalities, so when you have a multitude of volunteers, they go to any one of those trucks and it's the same. This one is going to be significantly different, this was the first ladder truck we ever purchased in the city of Seabrook, it's a ninety-five foot ladder, does have a pump and a tank on it, and as you can see, that's for elevated master streams and rescues, and I don't think I have to explain to anybody how tall our buildings are here. And don't forget our houses, we have three-story houses with extreme offsets, and so that's what that truck is for, that is a two thousand and eight. This one looks like to the commoner a regular engine, it is, but it also has some specialty equipment, hence the word rescue in there. This one was purposely designed for a worst-case scenario, so it does have water, it does have a tank, it also has Class B foam. The reason we use the word rescue is it has those high sides, and we can put a lot of rescue equipment in it, and it carries hydraulics, it carries rescue jacks, it carries Jaws equipment, it carries high-annual rescue equipment, and the worst-case scenario that we have planned for since the day I entered the fire department in nineteen eighty-seven was a daytime response, which would be less personnel typically, because a lot of the volunteers could be at work, a car wreck with entrapment, and the car is on fire. That has never happened, but that truck is built for that situation. It did actually come real close to a night shift call happening, so it did actually happen once late last year, but that truck served its purpose, which is you can immediately put water, Class B foam on it, has the Jaws of Life equipment, and of course, it was at Red Store for Nassau, one forty-six, but that person wasn't very injured, so that was a good, that was a good scene for us. And you own that fireboat, too, that is a thirty-five-hundred gallon per minute fireboat, it serves dual purpose of rescue and firefighting. A lot of the other boats on the lake do not have the pump capacity this one has, they serve more as rescue boats, some of them have like five-hundred gallon pumps. We started providing fire protection on the lake in the early eighties, before my time, and that's like when the Chamber of Commerce helped fund the first boat, city of Seabrook and all the cities put in for it. Purpose would be for water supply, fire streams, especially departments on the water, where you can't get a master ladder, you know, master water stream to it. The next biggest boats that are around are the Port of Houston fireboats, but they have trouble getting into the shallow lake, so we'd have to really look at and revisit if we decided to replace this in ten or fifteen years. Takes, it's, boats are a lot of money, as you know, they take a lot of damage in the water, and bottom jobs and the engines and all sorts of stuff, so it's fully functioning right now, but the city is sitting really well, if there were no volunteers tomorrow, you have everything you need, just put policemen on fire trucks and answer fire calls. But, um, so, there you go, you own five apparatus and the fire station, and do you have any questions about the, any of the apparatus? A side note, we made a, a decision with the city manager, probably five, six years ago, that we would buy all the support vehicles, it's much easier for us to buy them, those are the Tahos and the pickup trucks, and you actually own one of them, but that's a two thousand and thirteen, and it's about to go out of service here pretty soon. So do you have any questions at all?
Where are these stored, like the boat, for instance?
That's at Lakewood Yacht Club, and so they graciously give us a free slip, and the two sister pumpers you saw, if you remember the two thousand and fours, they're both in El Lago Station, and the rest of the fleet is at the Meyer Station.
Nathan, on the age, aging equipment, what are, what are the chances of upgrading, I mean, the trucks, the engines have no time on them, really, I mean, as far back as two thousand and four, those trucks don't have a lot of mileage, but, but what about aging pumps and aging internals? What's the, what's the trade-off there?
So, and then-
I see some of these, you know, departments have these trucks that, you know, with wooden ladders on the side of them, I mean, they're, they're all-
That's probably a choice, the wooden ladders.
Yeah, I understand, but, but aging trucks just seem to be-
The National Fire Protection Agency recommends that you replace those engines, frontline apparatus, seven to ten years, and the ladder trucks, like fif, twelve to fifteen years, those are going to be like the city of Houston in big cities that are really pushing out miles on them. You're absolutely right, some of those trucks don't even have ten thousand miles on them, but they go in for annual service, they go bumper to bumper, all fluids, they do pump testing, so it's really more about technology, and those two thousand and four rigs, even back then, they have like twenty-four little computers in them, so that's going to be the breaking point, if you will, is when can we not replace them, when will Pierce not support those computers anymore? The pumps, you know, it's seals and valves, right, that have to be rebuilt, and that, that occurs now, today, so when they go in for their annual service, they will check all those valves and seals. We haven't had to rebuild a pump in years, that's kind of a seventies, eighties model problem, where you actually had to take the pump out and do the packing and stuff like that, so I would have to defer to really Sidney's Martin and what their professional opinion is, I know when I was in that game, meaning talking to the dealers often or the maintenance folks, they said you'll have the best apparatus around, especially the older ones, because we take such good care of them.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's kind of my, my point, I know we just ordered a new truck as a replacement, and-
Yeah, you're, so you're-
Be here in about five years.
So when that arrives, that truck will be twenty-five years old.
Correct, yeah.
And, so, you know, as a first-line apparatus coming to your house or your house, you really want that to be a-
No, I understand.
With the technological advances, the ladder truck, too, could have some of those problems with the piping and stuff, but, you know, right now, everything's repairable.
And that's the same thing with an aluminum boat, I mean, essentially, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of resistant to corrosion and everything else, so-
Exactly.
And that boat was used at the hotel fire, right?
It's one of those one-off pieces of apparatus, we get a lot of calls for it, especially in the summer, but we have to filter those types of calls, so we have had more rescues than we had fires, but it was, it supplied two five-inch supply lines to the hotel fire, and of course, something that we haven't had, knock on wood, is one of those big marina fires, that hasn't happened in twenty or thirty years, but when those boats go and they're under the sheds, that is an incredible thing to try to, a very difficult thing to try to stop, and that, that's where that would be really coming to play. Oh, we actually use it quite a bit in Nassau Bay, those Balboa fires.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Ms. Gail, next month, or are we going to go for quarterly? Okay, yeah, we'll figure it out, it's my schedule, too. Okay, any other questions? I didn't mean to take up too much time for my part, congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thanks, Nathan. Two point two, introduce and hold a badge ceremony for newly promoted Seabrook Police Lieutenant Jason Smith, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'd like to ask Sergeant Jason Smith up to the front, please. I know all of you know Jason, but I haven't known him for that long, I can tell you that he's been in law enforcement for over thirty years, twenty-five of that has been with Seabrook, he is an amazingly knowledgeable officer, he's impressed me from the very first day I got here, so it's with great pride that I get to promote him to lieutenant.
Do the consent agenda first. Yeah. Until I quiet down for a second. Okay, moving forward. Three point O, the consent agenda, three point one, approve the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Three point two, approve the quarterly investment report for the period of October twenty twenty-three through December twenty twenty-three. Consider and take all appropriate action on resolutions twenty twenty-four dash oh nine, suspending the effective date of the center point rate change. Resolution to the city of Seabrook, Texas, suspending the April tenth, twenty twenty-four effective date for Center Point Energy Houston Electric LLC, requested rate change to permit the city time to study the request and to establish reasonable rates. Approving continued cooperation with the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, requiring Lord Ghost Link attorneys and consulting services to negotiate with the company and direct any, any necessary litigation and appeals, requiring reimbursement of city's rate case expenses, finding that the meeting at which the resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of disresolution to the company and legal counsel for the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities. Three point four, consider and take all appropriate action of resolution twenty ten, authorizing the city manager to submit an application for the U S, to, to the U S Department of Homeland Security State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. A resolution to the city of Seabrook, Texas, authorizing the city manager of the city of Seabrook to submit an application for the U S Department of Homeland Security State, I didn't have to read that again, did I? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? It's approved. Okay. Four point, four point O, specific public hearing. Four point one, conduct a public hearing to take all appropriate action on an amendment to the city Seabrook Code of Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regulations, Section three point O, R L D, Low Density Single Family Residential District, Section three point three, Residential, Single Family Detached Residential District, Section three point O four, R point, R dash two, Single Family Detached Residential Districts, Small Lots, Section three point O five, R three, Medium Density Residential District, Section three point O six, C one, Light Commercial District, Section three point O seven, C, C two, Medium Commercial District, Section three point O eight, C, C dash three, Heavy Commercial District, Section three point O four, Section Highway one forty-six, South Commercial District, Section three point one O, W A D, Waterfront Activity District, Section three point one, M M U, Marine Oriented Mixed Use District, Section three twelve, Old Seabrook District, Section three point one three, State Highway one forty-six, Main Commercial District, by modifying its supplementary regulations to include the addition of tents and lean-tos as prohibitive temporary structures to be used for onsite dwelling purposes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the, the purpose of this request is recently, we've had an issue with some encampments throughout our community that have been on public and private property, so at the request of code enforcement, Public Works and Police Department, they requested that I add tents and lean-tos to this current section of the code, which would give them some additional authority and, and would create some clarity if they write citations to municipal court, and we go to municipal court on regulating people being able to live in tents or lean-to on public or private property, so that was the purpose. And with that, I, uh, I did take this to planning and zoning, at their February fifteenth meeting, they did recommend approval of this item, so with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this, this is just for construction, during construction, not for, I mean, don't we have something like this in place, just in general, for, is this just to the construction part of the charter?
Yes, I mean, for the most part, what this ordinance section will do is anywhere within the city, it will be prohibited for anybody to use a tent or lean-to as a, as a temporary structure, and what we did is we just added it to the section of the code that's already existing, so what I've highlighted and read is new, the existing language in B all exists currently, so travel trailers and recreational vehicles are already prohibited from being used as a temporary dwelling unless it's permissible within our zoning ordinance within a travel trailer park.
And tell me again what a lean-to is?
A lean-to would be typically a structure that you would see where there would be, they would use something to prop something up, and then typically, there's an angled roof, and typically, you would see somebody do that with a tarp or something, where they put a couple stakes up-
Okay, yeah.
And pull the tarp down at a forty-five degree angle.
Okay, this isn't talking about like if somebody put up a, a tent for construction, like to get out of the shade to cut materials in the yard or something, you know, this is only for, if they want to live-
This is for dwelling purposes.
Okay.
Yeah, for dwelling purposes only.
Okay.
So if somebody is going to build something, they want to live under it, these two things would be prohibited, you wouldn't be able to use these type of structures to live under.
Gotcha, okay, sad we have to put that in there, but thank you.
I guess the only thing I, the only thing I don't, I don't understand is the, is the word temporary, I mean, a living, a dwelling unit is probably more of a permanent, I mean, temporary str, temporary tents are all over town.
Yeah.
And they're not used for living purposes, but a living purpose would be a permanent structure, not a temporary structure.
Yeah, well, I didn't make any modifications, I mean, if the council would like us to make that a modification, all I did was use the original language it was in here, that, I mean, basically, it says used for onsite dwelling purposes, within the language, it said temporary, but the ordinance itself does not address temporary.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the word temporary is confusing, and could be-
Well, and it, it won't be, it, it may be used for onsite dwelling purposes, again, the current language, how it's written, doesn't address anything temporarily, it's-
Well, it's a temporary-
You can't use it-
It says temporary, temporary structure, it's, it says to include-
Yeah, no, yeah.
Include the addition of tents and lean-tos is-
It's just what was in the code before.
Okay, so we can just-
So, again, if-
Repeat the word-
Council would like me to take out the word temporary and just put no structures including tents, it's, when we come back at second reading, I can modify that if it's the will of council.
Well, I don't think there is such a thing as a temporary structure that somebody-
Or just take the temporary out of part B.
So, when we get to the new business item, you guys actually-
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Act on this, it's part of your motion to approve this, if you would make a motion to remove the word temporary, when it comes back at second reading, I'll, that word won't be-
Okay.
In place.
Anybody else? Okay. Four point O, new business. Oh, that, I'm sorry, is there anybody out here that wants to speak, since this is a public hearing, for or against this issue? Any, any Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts out there that use tents? No? Okay. All right, then we're going to close the public hearing. No, I lost my place. At five point O, five point one, discuss, consider and take all appropriate action on first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh six, a request to amend the city Seabrook Code Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning, Article Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Associated Regula, Regulations, by modifying the supplementary regulations to include the addition of tents and lean-tos as prohibitive temporary structures to be used for onsite dwelling purposes. I don't have to read the second part again. Do I hear a motion?
Remove to approve, five point one, amending the language in B to eliminate the word temporary.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Pass as you name it. Okay, five point two, consider and take all appropriate action upon the first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh seven, authorizing and ordering the issuance of city of Seabrook, Texas General Obligation Bonds, Series twenty twenty-four, prescribing in terms and form, therefore making other provisions regarding such bonds, including use of proceeds thereof and matter, matters incident thereof. An ordinance, I don't have to read it again. Okay, an ordinance authorizing and ordering the issuance of the city of Seabrook Tech General Obligation Bonds, Series twenty twenty-four, prescribing the terms and form thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including the use of the proceeds thereof and matters incident thereto. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. John Robo could be okay financial security-
Didn't understand a word I said.
He's the one who wrote it, not me, I'm just the financial guy, he's the lawyer. Marcus Dietz, your bond council is here tonight. Tonight, we're here to present the sale results that took place this morning, we went to the market, sold both series of bonds, the general obligation, which voters approved, and also certificate of obligation, generating proceeds of ten million dollars. Very happy with the results, I'm gonna go through them with you, but before I get started, this is the bond buyer index, this is a weekly index, municipal bond rates, if you look on the far right there, it's the, the general obligation index, which is what we sold today, is a three point five two percent. Put that in context, when I was up here in January, it was a three point three one, so it's gone about twenty-one basis points, but I will tell you, because of your rating, and because of the market, we were able to reduce the interest costs we projected and get a lower rate for the bonds that we sold today. We were able to sell both series of bonds today, the Series twenty twenty-four General Obligation Bonds generated proceeds of four million, three hundred and five thousand dollars for projects, but we only had to sell four million, one hundred and fifty thousand to do so, and there on the middle columns, the principal interests of those G O bonds are there, compared to your current debt in the far left, less the bonds are paid with other sources, either E D C sales tax or water sewer funds, plus the Series two twenty-four General Obligation Bonds, then the certificate of obligation, there we sold nine million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand of bonds that generated proceeds of ten million dollars for the city, and there in the far right is your total tax-supported debt service requirements after the sale of both series of bonds. In summary, again, like I said, we sold four million, one hundred and fifty thousand in bonds, investors willing to pay a premium, meaning pay more for the part, and the part amount for the bonds, we funded capitalized interest, which is basically your September one payment of this year, since you've already levied a tax rate for this tax year, this will cover that payment for this debt obligation, less your expenses to sell the bonds, generates a proceeds of four million, three hundred and five thousand for the city. The all-cost trench rate was a four point one eight three percent for the general obligation bonds. Uh, the all-cost interest rate was a four point one eight three percent for the General Obligation Bonds. And then for the COs, we sold nine million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand of bonds, again, premium of six hundred and five thousand from investors. Capitalized interest of a hundred and seventy-six, again, to take care of the September one payment of this year. Less expenses of a hundred and forty-four thousand equals total proceeds of ten million dollars, and those sold for an all-cost interest rate of a four point one six percent. We estimated in our bond election material and also in January that the rate would be about four, four point five, so we came well below that. And as a result, we saved almost a million dollars in interest cost on the bonds. Uh, tonight we're asking you to approve the, both, both bond issues, the ordinance is authorizing to sell both bond issues. Uh, if you do so, we'll close on all, uh, April eleventh, at which point you'll receive your funds. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the financing. Uh, Mr. Dietz will be happy to answer the questions you have on the, uh, ordinances we're asking you to approve tonight.
Anybody have any questions? So, are, are, we're locked in now, we're not waiting for closing?
No, we're locked in, the rates are locked in, these, these are the final numbers.
Okay.
What do you need, a motion to approve?
Yes. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash oh seven.
Second.
Any more questions? All in favor? Thank you.
I think there's the second one.
We got more. Okay, uh, five point three, consider and take all appropriate action upon the first and final reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, authorizing and ordering the issuance of City of Seabrook Texas Certificates of Obligation, Series twenty twenty-four, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars, awarding the sale thereof and containing matters of ins- incident thereof. Ordinance authorizing and ordering the issuance of City of Seabrook Texas Certificates of Obligation, Series twenty twenty-four, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of ten million dollars, awarding the sale thereof and containing matters of incident thereto.
My report could date both of those matters, so, happy to answer your questions you have on the COs.
Same thing, any questions on this one? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance twenty twenty-four oh eight.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank y'all, congratulations.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, five point four, consider and take all appropriate action on the first and final reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-four oh nine, amending the Operating Enterprise and Public Safety Vehicle and Equipment Replacements Fund budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending the amount of appropriations for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three, and ending October, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, by authorizing certain additions in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars for General Fund, Public Safety Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, and Enterprise Fund, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to facilitate the changes identified in finding available unencumbered funds for the supplemental appropriation and/or reserve reduction. Got Mike on this one, but who wants to, who wants to talk on this one?
I don't need to talk.
Okay, is there any, well first, is there any questions that we have on this one?
Move to approve twenty twenty-four dash ten.
Second.
One more time, any questions?
Wrong one, that was oh nine. Twenty twenty-four dash nine.
Yeah, this is five point four.
I move to approve twenty twenty-four dash oh nine.
The first one wasn't here, we don't have to go back. Okay, all in favor? It's approved, thank you. We were spending money like drunken sailors in a hurry. Five point four, or five point five, consider and take all appropriate action on the first and final reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten, modifying the civil service classification system for the Seabrook Police Department. An ordinance modifying and continuing a civil service classification system consisting of classes, positions, pay grades, and compensation levels in a classified service of the Seabrook Fire Depart, uh, Seabrook Police Department, providing for a repeal with limited extension, providing a survivability clause and effective date, containing other provisions relating to the subject and replacing previously adopted ordinances twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two. Okay.
Mayor, uh, we've got, Sinia, uh.
Oh, you said Sinia, I didn't see her back there.
Make it worth her while, hanging around.
Yeah, come in, she's been hanging around, let her come up and talk.
Mayor and Council, um, the reason for this ordinance is, um, at the request of, uh, Chief Nelson, we, um, increased, uh, the lieutenant position on a temporary basis while we, um, we got the promotion under, taken care of. Now that we've promoted our new lieutenant, we would like to reduce the number of sergeants from seven to six. We'll keep the same number of, um, employees in the, in the civil service positions, um, and that's the reason that we're coming before you is to approve this ordinance, to reduce the number of sergeants to six.
So, it's, it's just really housekeeping?
Just some housekeeping, yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve twenty-four, twenty twenty-four ten.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five point oh, or six point oh, new business, old business, six point one, consider and take all appropriate action on a six-month trap neuter release pilot program for the waterfront targeted zone. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Over the last few months, we've met several times on this topic, uh, after several meetings with those that, uh, desired to be part of this volunteer program. Uh, we came to an agreement on our requests and demands and their request, so that we've all come to a meeting of the minds. We would like to ask Council to approve the six-month pilot program just on waterfront in Petit, or that area. Uh, we're going to provide credentialing for the volunteers, uh, signage at that location, and the, uh, microchips for the animals that are in our program. Uh, that will be the extent of the cost to the city. The volunteers will take care of all the medical, uh, neutering, uh, spaying, they'll take care of the trapping, the whole nine yards, at no cost to the city.
Question, who, who in the city is going to coordinate with the volunteers?
Either myself or the Animal Control Director.
And are the volunteers all lined up now?
Generally, yes, but specifically, there are specific roles, not yet.
Okay.
I think the package is great, I looked over it all, I think everything y'all have done is wonderful, and I'm really happy to hear that y'all have worked out and everybody's happy, it seems like, so I hope this works.
Thank you, yes, and my plan is to come back before Council every probably sixty days to update you all on where we are with this program.
Any other questions? So, we're, we're, we're not housing the animals?
No, sir, we are not.
Okay.
The, the extent of the city's involvement is what I explained, it's just purchasing some basic, uh, equipment for that area for this program. It doesn't involve the Animal Control Shelter whatsoever.
Okay.
Uh, no, sir, it's, it's going to be rela- really low, probably on the order of a thousand dollars or less.
We're doing the chipping?
Yeah, we're doing the chipping for our, our felines, yes, sir. Yes, less than that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I move to approve six point one.
No, we weren't, it wasn't.
I move to approve six point one.
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you. I, I, I've got a, I'd like to, uh, go into executive session, I have a question of the attorney. Seven point one, Section five fifty-one point zero seven one, conduct a closed executive session to consult with the city attorney for legal matters related to the agenda items. Sorry, this, it's just gonna take a second, I just have a, I just, oh, it's, uh, six thirty-eight.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Came here.
Yeah. I think it's my current, second, I'm, I'm, you gotta get, you gotta announce his retirement and like.
Yeah. And then. Yeah, we'll discuss it. Stormwater. Jack calls me. Jack. I think his wife. Say you're hung. You've got to get, you've announced his retirement and like. Send it.
Yeah. So about this.
How many years? Time means. Break.
Sure.
She has.
If you don't see that much, it's going to be more. Tell her those are more.
The rest of the ladies are going to. I don't, I don't think jokes. Someone's talking to. I was like four weeks. Liz would call me. Questions. It's like for this one. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Okay. For the same, don't we have for that?
Yeah. No relation, I'm assuming.
Okay.
Who did it hire?
Oh, did she? Yeah.
She, she started. This, this.
Right.
Susan was also. Yeah, she took over. You know. What's her name? She took over. She worked on this. She got. She was, she was. She shared the burden. You have the same burden. She had to take. Her. Susan. And that was absolutely, she sat on like. She, she was like. Stuff on the season. She was working in her lab. And he was. Going. Doing. But she worked. Nice to keep in touch with Suzie because we would. You know, you're always.
Yeah.
Everybody person simply. Oh, yeah, they, that changed. But that was a problem. She was talking to. I understand that. Yeah. She got. There are. But I mean, she was talking to. But yeah. Scott. Two. Like when they were going to that, his wife. Yeah, his wife. Definitely like. As far as I know. I would. I would give. When I was in. Tower. Just. Point. Yeah, they switched some of the things, but then they switched that together. But I mean, they used, you know, you know, before they. Remember. People that were like thirty years, never taken like. And they were realizing. So like, I feel like the last two years, they made, they made him start like. He was all.
How you burn it?
Made him burn. I mean. Our last experience. He's, he was like. He was like somebody, he was like those. Yeah. Obviously. What does next?
Go get the seats. I want to. If. Too. Too. It's like my.
Why? Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you know, the question. I'm. The answer. Yeah. I'm.
Beautiful. First. I've been there a long time with, with Chris. All right. Just talked about the early time. Yeah, I was. Some of that Texas. Texas. Wait, is it? He's worked in Texas. I remember his real, but I was gonna say his real. Texas native. Some other native. Richard. Is. Like. Out. He's more. Like, I mean, you know, we understand that we made us there. I've never. Never been. So. It's like. Then a lot of like bit of. A bit of water. Like office. But it's like weird.
It's like.
The, the one that's. Yeah. Usually. The. Were fired. Don't know.
Getting.
But I think it's. We used to only. Real. So it wasn't, that was the weirdest thing. We didn't know like. Sorry. About a hundred times. In the third year, we're filming. So by the time we got to. Third year, maybe. Which is.
Do you have a question? Any Texas?
Uh, one point. They decided to. Go through where. Three years. We were outside. Inspired. Station. They brought in that one. Debbie, who's, she helped us. You guys went out. How's. We all used to be together. Like. The original. They had that EMS addition. That's where.
I know. But I'm trying to tell you.
Yeah. And where Walker used to. And. The local police station. I just had a base. They was generating. And. And there was a. Exhaust pipe going out. Cop. They were sleeping. I ran into that. Well, and you know, there used to be a DPS. There used to be some DPS officers. Office out of there. And you know, there used to be a DPS office in the city center. I got my license. Back in. Back in. Yeah, like a. But I ran into one of those guys. Down of the, when you go down there. It's like, that's where investigations. Still there, it's like they're a little back. Or, or right when you get down to the bottom, there was a office. Like our whole office, like two or three. Office down. At a basement in that building. Apparently. Yeah. Right, no, right at the end of the street, they had. Or they had flags. They had. Concrete. It was the end of Walker, because I did mine there too. You could go practice. But they had like the concrete with a little wire. All these. But that's where you have to go take. At least. He's like.
When you get ready for six point three. That's your one way to do this. Okay.
Counsel has reserved, has returned from executive session. It is seven oh one. No action was taken. Six point two. Consider and take all appropriate action on replacing a section of wood fence with a chain link fence at five oh two A Pine Gully. Within the community garden project, any amount not to exceed forty four hundred dollars and consider source of funding. Gail.
Mayor and counsel, this item was tabled last, or postponed last time. We went back and got some different quotes. The forty four hundred, we actually got another quote in that was a little bit less than this today. However, the quotes are not reflective of actually clearing the brush and removing the old fence. So forty four hundred is still what we would be estimating. Once we get in there and get everything cleared out.
Question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
At my house, when I had to replace my fence, I had to go to my neighbors and contribute because it was on the easement. So. I'm just questioning, I don't know who originally put the fence up. I guess it was us. I don't know. But. I couldn't replace my fence without talking to them and letting them know. Now, I did also give them a bill and say, this is your portion because we shared the fence. So we, you know, we split it and they were okay with that. But I went out and got the bids and vice versa. But, so I didn't know if this was the same type of situation. I'm not saying whoever, because somebody's benefiting from this fence because of its own easement. You know what I mean?
Right.
So.
Well, really securing the prop, the garden though, more than anything.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just, just the question.
So, so if your neighbor said that you, they weren't going to participate, you couldn't put your fence up?
No, I put it up. But I, I would have to, I would have to pay for it.
I mean, it's not, it's not, they're not required to.
No, they don't, they don't have to. Correct. But. Just, just made the comment. Sorry. Is, is the fence. In such poor repair, I've tried to get over twice and I can't, I can't get in there close enough to see it. Is it falling down going to hurt someone? That, is that the purpose of wanting to replace it?
Being held up by vines. It's bad.
It's corroded. It's in bad shape.
I mean, the fence is in bad shape. And, and I went out, looked at it. You know, I, I see no reason. Not to replace the fence for this amount of money. Clearing the area, filling the ditch and regaining all that property. I mean, the ditch doesn't do anything. It actually just kind of is a pond when it rains. The water evaporates eventually, but it doesn't go anywhere. The best I can tell, it doesn't drain.
So Mayor and Council, one thing, just as an addition, as we were researching the easements and property lines and such. Public Works actually did a lot of work to make sure that we were looking to make sure that the adjacent property owner didn't have any drainage issues if that was filled in. We do have some of the back property that if we fill this ditch in, Public Works is making recommendations, they're going to need to do a drainage project to properly drain the rest of the city property back to the tributary back there, Pine, Pine Gully. So there'll be some additional work. It doesn't have anything to do with the adjacent property owner. It has more to do with proper drainage for the rest of the acreage that goes down to the gully that's owned by the city.
How, how big of an area does it drain, Kevin? Can't drain much.
I'll let Kevin kind of come up and explain what they found.
Best we can tell, historic flows take it back to the east of the gully. So we'd be looking to take some of the diverted flows that have been taken to the north, to that ditch. And put them back where we feel that they should go historically. And so it would be that entire west track will drain back that way. In order to get it there, it's, it's just a matter of digging a swale to get it to convince the water to go that way. But. Not something we can handle.
Is that, could that, excuse me, could that be part of the study that we're doing right now on the rest of Carruthers?
It's not a formal drainage study. It's just looking at topo and looking at how it historically flowed. And, and there, there's been some modifications to take. Some of that drainage to a shorter distance to get it to that ditch line because it was there. Filling that in will just cause us to go back and, and regrade some of that, but we can handle that.
Yeah, it, it just looked to me that. From, from where I was standing by the fence, looking back to the west, I was going uphill.
There, there is a ridge in there. But if we, if we stay to the south end of that property, at the city property line, we can take it straight back.
Well, I don't want to remove the ditch if it's, if it's of benefit to our west side.
It, it's, it's not enough of a benefit, I don't think, to, to continue to direct flows to it. It should, in my opinion, go to the west.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you. Move to approve six point two.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Mayor and Council, if you can, the second part of that agenda item is the source of funding. So we have been asked if the bond funds or insurance funds could be used for this project. If council desires to do that, then I'd like to have that as part of the motion that that comes from that source of funding.
Okay, I will to amend my motion to approve six point two with funding coming from the insurance proceeds.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Yes, it's unanimously. Thank you. Oh, no. That was the amended vote. All in favor of the amended? Original vote?
Six point two.
Which was just to approve.
Just to approve.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. Six point three. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of Carruthers Community Garden Operations and Maintenance Agreement between the City of Seabrook and Carruthers Coastal Gardens five oh one three C. C three for a term of three years as amended as previously discussed. Utilities project, fertility maintenance project and project funding to the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I want to go on the record, I've supported the community.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, I want to go on the record, I've supported the community gardens from the get-go. However, I want to go on the record as opposing them, uh, for granting subsidies to the coastal Carruthers Gardens five oh one three C for the Carruthers Community Gardens at this time for the following reason. Council was never provided an explanation by the recipient nor sponsoring member of council as to why the community gardens is in need of these annual subsidies from the city, especially when one takes into consideration that this venue, when it was presented to council in twenty twenty one, was promoted as would be self-sufficient after the city's initial investment. If we go forward and approve these subsidies at a minimum, I feel we are obligated to be able to explain to our citizens why the community gardens are no longer self-sustaining before we reach into our citizens' pockets for the money. Additionally, I think we should also be able to identify to our citizens the expected benefits to the community gardens for these expenses, along with the metrics for measuring these benefits. Thank you.
Anyway, anybody else? Okay, there was, there was, there's, there's three essentially.
May I speak to that, Mayor?
No.
Gail was provided all those documents last week. A complete explanation does figure this out.
So, we have, uh, we have the, uh, we have the approval of the maintenance agreement, um, for three years, as discussed. Everybody's familiar with it? Oh, any more discussion?
I'd like to, I'm sorry, um, the five thousand dollars was to be an agreement to show that we, um, are supporter in this, um, project, and thought we all agreed on that last meeting. So, now I'm kind of confused on, on why Buddy's not wanting to support that, but that will go towards anything that they could need that'll also go through their, um, we, we also told them their background checks would be part of that. Um, but they, but they're going to need things. I mean, granted, they are going to get, you know, funding from other sources, but this is just a small amount that I thought we all agreed on last time. Five thousand dollars a year is not much.
My, my point was that we've never had it explained, why is it not self-sufficient? Because it was, and you go back to twenty twenty one, we had two hundred and fifty people lined up for the beds. Uh, we were presented an Excel spreadsheet that sold four thousand dollars worth of income. All I'm saying is, every expense that we've approved up to now on any little thing, we've had a detailed report as to what it's going to go for, why it's needed, et cetera, and we still don't have it. I understand what gardens have and this, that, and the other, but what we haven't been presented is, why is it not working as presented in twenty twenty one? That's all I'm asking.
Um, Jesse did email, um, quite a bit of information to Gail last week. I don't know why she didn't send it to everyone, but, uh, she did, he did send it to me and Joe, um, just today. Uh, I, I was going to ask her to forward it to you guys, but it was three thirty, so I figured it would be too late. There is, um, who's got a budget for twenty twenty four? I can, I can pass this down if you'd like, with itemized, uh, itemized out. Want to read it?
I have no problem with the budget. We had a budget presented to us in twenty twenty one. What I'm asking again is, why is it not self-sustaining? That's, that's all I'm asking. What happened, what happened?
The amount.
Look, we've been, we've been hatching on this agreement for a long, long time. I don't think anybody is just terribly excited that we still are at this point. Uh, there's, we are very close, uh, to getting it approved. If we look at items one, two, and three, from the bottom up, project funding by the city, we've already voted to approve five thousand dollars. Now, obviously, there has to come a budget before that, or a purpose for those funds before they're dispersed, the same way that any other five oh one C three is treated. At the same time, the same way that every other five oh one C three has been informed in the past year, we're going to give what we can this year, we need to wean people off of the city as far as five oh one C threes go. So, I don't, I don't object to the funding and approving it, the request for a dispersment of it has to come through proper channels, which is something else we got to talk about before we vote. Uh, but I don't object to the funding. The facility maintenance, the agreement is clear, the city will maintain what it ensures. What is not insured by the city is the responsibility of five oh one C three to maintain. And that's, that's a very clear-cut distinction between the two. As far as utilities go, I do believe that there should be some sort of fair share there. Uh, I'm not entirely comfortable with the city paying a hundred percent of whatever water, electric, et cetera bill comes up.
So, Mayor and counsel, one clarification, I've got pulled up section three, which was drafted in the agreement that's before you tonight. The reason that the detail that Jesse emailed over was not part of the attachments for tonight was that the five thousand amendment has not come back to you, that was not really part of this discussion, uh, was just putting a process in place, if council agrees that when you approve the five thousand dollars, uh, that you would approve having something attached to that to show what your expenditures are, and that would happen on an annual basis. So, the agreement was just to get some language that you're comfortable with, that every year when you're approving that, you're understanding what the, the monies are going towards.
Can we hash that out later, once we get some feedback from, um, the nonprofit as to what exactly they would like that for?
And consider the dispersment process to nonprofits, and, and it's just another nonprofit. There's a lot of emotion attached to it, but it's just another nonprofit, and we support several of them every year, everywhere, anywhere from six to nine of them. They submit a proposal for what they're going to spend the money on. It's part of the packet that comes in. Uh, they say, I'm going to spend this much money on marketing, whatever it happens to be. Uh, that request comes to council, we vote to approve that request based on what they say they're going to spend the money on, and the city disperses the money to the nonprofit. At the end of the year, or for most of them, at the end of their event, they have to come back and say, hey, you gave us ten dollars, this is where we spend it. That's all that I want to see from, from Carruthers, is that they're treated the same way as all the other nonprofits are, and that that accountability is established on the front end and the back end. Obviously, we're not going to disperse any money until we know exactly what's going to be spent on. Uh, so, I don't see that as an issue.
Is that correct, how the nonprofit process works? I'm not sure, we've discussed that before.
He's referring to the hotel occupancy tax applications? Yeah.
Right, it's the same, it's another profit. It's a, it's a different source of funding for it, but it's still a nonprofit.
I don't know that they could get hot tax from that, it has to be beds and heads, heads and beds, sorry.
Beds and heads is the justification for the funding, but the process by which they request that funding, uh, is still, has to go through an approved budget by city council before the money is dispersed.
Let me jump in. Regardless of process, you have, by agreement, the operator will submit an annual plan and budget. So, annually, they will submit their annual plan and budget, and you will approve it. That's the process.
And it's in, it's in the agreement? Anymore? I do, I do have a question myself, on the, uh, on the utilities, I mean, um, I guess, I, I guess I thought that's where the five thousand dollars was going, uh, to utilities, I didn't realize utilities were this much, but, but I, um, I thought that that's what the five thousand dollars was to fund, that anything that was going on, that's what I thought, was we were, we were doing utilities, we were doing some maintenance, and we were going to, I thought the fence was coming out, but we found another source for the fence. So, I, I'm, I'm confused as to, as to why that's still ongoing question. Is that not?
I think we did approve, we, we did discuss, I know we approved and discussed, uh, the funding, five thousand, and it's, we were kind of on the fence, I guess, on, on the utilities, or, um, however, I, I do want to make a point that the sheet that we got tonight on the dais is not the same comparison on water usage, which is the driving biggest expense here, really. Um, that the sheet that Gail gave me, it was this spreadsheet, and it showed me how many gallons, it says total consumption, and there's, I'm assuming it's in gallons.
That per thousand.
Per thousand gallons?
So, I think what you're referencing is the email by Jesse of, uh, water usage being three dollars per month?
Okay.
And then?
Three dollars and eighty-three cent, three dollars and eighty-three cents per two thousand gallons, is that not?
Per thousand.
Per thousand? Okay.
And how we do our billing with the city, if there's a meter, uh, the utility department produces bills for every meter, including city facilities, and that includes, um, the base bill plus the usage. So, what you're looking at is a typical bill, as you would see on any of our meters, it's not just the, the usage part of that. So, we actually account for that, uh, like we would any other meter, and charge that against the utilities for the parks. So, we're not just doing usage because it's a city facility.
But I, but I thought, I thought we talked last time, just correct me, is that there was just one meter out there that, are we sub-metering Carruthers?
We're not sub-metering, one of the, just for clarification, I think the stubs and the pictures from last time, and there's a little note on there, you know, um, those are all on the Pine Gully Park. So, there's the stubs, and then there's the restrooms, and there's the meter for those at Pine Gully. And then when Carruthers Main House, Casita, and the yellow building and all of that, that's on a separate meter. So, what you're looking at as far as the utilities is everything on the other side of that forested line, considered the Carruthers, it's separate and metered from Pine Gully.
And, and there's nothing on there but the garden on that meter right now?
The Casita is still standing, so there is, um, that building that has utilities connected to it.
Can you also explain the fiber? Um, because I don't have internet currently, I thought.
We left it on at the Casita, so the ongoing charges, we're about to turn it off until this request came through, so the Casita was having Comcast bills, so that's just historical.
Is anybody using the Casita at all?
Not at this time.
And the same, and the same thing with, with gas, what, what, what gas is being used?
Kevin, I'll have to defer to you on that one. There's nothing, we've taken everything out of the kitchen, so.
Is the heat gas? Is there any heaters out there that's gas?
We're getting a gas bill.
I'm not sure why we have a gas bill, even though it's only twenty bucks, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think there's a meter, when they took the house down, they took the meter out, I hope.
I don't think you're using.
Anyway, all right.
So, we'll check on that.
I think we're, I think.
One, the, the comment I wanted to make earlier, seems like an appropriate time to do it before we go to motion. Um, uh, the five oh one C three, uh, with, uh, Jesse and I believe Nemo on the board. I don't know who else is on that board. All, all three of you are on the board. All four of you are on the board?
Plus one.
Plus one, outstanding. Uh, thank you for doing that. Uh, all four of you, I believe, are also on open space and trails. Only two of the four, okay. My concern is that open space and trails makes a recommendation to city council, uh, for funding to, uh, five oh one C three, so that essentially you would be voting to fund your own five oh one C three through the city as a recommending body, that it's not a difficult thing to address, just as long as we're all understand that board members of the five oh one C three who are on open space and trails must recuse themselves from votes and discussions regarding Carruthers Community Gardens. To avoid a direct conflict of interest as voting yourself money to your five oh one C three, or recommending that, that council vote money to, given to your five oh one C three.
Would we be able to ask questions? I'm on the open space trails. Can we even ask questions?
No. Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mayor, may I jump in since there's a little bit of confusion? I think the intent of that was, uh, the garden section is a, a part of the overall park, and there was some concern that it does create a conflict of interest. Y'all have, as a city, self-police above and beyond state law, and so any direct or indirect financial benefit, um, to y'all would preclude you from deliberating or taking any action as it relates to open space and trails. So, no, as a board member, you could not ask questions. It does not, however, granted, y'all are wholly a recommending body as a whole, precludes you individually from coming up to council and expressing your opinions about a matter. Just when it comes to the deliberation during the committee meetings and the vote on it, you'd have to recuse yourself as board members. As it relates solely to the garden portion of this park, so I think the intent is council did not want to, um, or they, they would like to distinguish the garden section, which is defined in the agreement, from the rest of the park, so that y'all can still do the good work on the trails and the other sections of, of, of the park as a whole.
I'm, I'm not exactly sure, though, that, that that would ever occur, um, due to, due to the fact that the, the, if the garden is a five oh one three C, uh, you, you wouldn't be voting for any money expenditures from open space. So, I don't, I don't think there's an issue.
I think it's just a clarification, just so y'all understand, if the issue comes up and something in your brain says this might be a problem, we'll, we'll deal with it then. I, I don't envision a problem.
We just, I think we just wanted to get it on the table. Okay, all right, so, is there any more discussion on, on this, other, other than?
Mayor, I would like to.
For the money?
For clarification, tonight, we're approving an agreement with a, essentially establishing, uh, an amount of money set aside for future expenditures, once they submit their, um, their budget for approval. So, issues like utilities and things like that will come up during the discussion about approving the actual monies.
And that's what I was getting to.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, since, since we've already voted on a number, um, and, and the, the, uh, fiber optics, we're doing the fence separately anyway, uh, and utilities, I think, are just issues that when they submit to the city and to council, ci, uh, council can either approve or not approve those funds, that distribution. So, I, we have, uh, can I have a motion?
So, Mayor, Mayor and counsel, one thing of clarification, the draft that is on the agenda, when I modified that language, it was not the intent for the utilities to be part of the five thousand. So, um, if that's the will of council, and we'll have to strike that, we've got that called out separately?
That, that was only my opinion.
Okay.
I, I, that was my understanding that that's what the five thousand was, was for those items. It, above and beyond, we're really getting into a, I mean, we keep on funding, 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 and I'm not for that.
We paid utilities at the Community House, the, I mean, the park, all the other parks.
I'm, I'm saying that I thought the five thousand dollars we voted for, and so I would not be in favor of this, agree.
Mayor, I think the, the way it's, you, you can see Gail pulled it up, up there, it's a blank right now for what percentage of utilities, all or not, that they would pay for. I think we can just, as part of the motion, that will be deferred as part of their, uh, their annual budget submission, uh, for approval of expenditures. Now, we don't need to put a number in there right now, is, is my point.
Okay.
I think, well, just like we're going to supplement the exhibit with the annual budget, we would then supplement this with the percentage of utilities, if any, that y'all decide that they should, uh, take care of.
I just want to say one last thing, because it, you know, this is a list of utilities, we've got gas, fiber, okay, fibers at the Casita, nobody's been using. we've got gas, fiber, okay, fibers at the Casita, nobody's been using, it's 215 dollars a month, gas, nobody knows where it's at, that's another 30, you know, 300 something dollars a year. I mean, you know, we need to really take a look at this, and I don't think that the water consumption numbers make any sense to me right now, so I need to talk to Gail, you know, more in depth, but that's really the big, big numbers. So, I mean, we're talking not much for us to, for the utilities.
501(c)(3). And that's where I thought they were coming in. Those are all. I mean, we, we addressed it last meeting, we all voted for $5,000 for an annual budget. And so now we're adding to an annual budget. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, those utilities has always been a separate item that we've been discussing to cover, to cover.
Thought it ended when we had voted $5,000.
Oh, I don't think that that was the case. That's why she still has it on there.
Was the case for me, so I didn't favor it.
Oh, wasn't for me.
Mayor.
Vote the way you want to.
Yeah, I think at this point, the appropriate motion would, would be to approve the agreement as written.
Okay.
If there is such a motion.
So do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agreement as written.
Second.
Sorry, what number are we on, six point, I'm sorry, nine point?
Six point three.
Six point three.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? All opposed? Doesn't carry. Okay, moving on. Eight point one, council will re.
Mayor, I'm sorry, did you say motion carried?
No, I said most, most.
Doesn't.
Doesn't carry, okay, thank you.
Nine point one, discussion and possible action regarding a project with Galveston Bay Foundation to reintroduce oysters to the city's lagoon located west of Main Street, east of Highway 146 in North Highville, with all activity to take place on city-owned land.
A couple of years ago, we approached Galveston Bay Foundation about restoration of our oyster population in the lagoons. And they came in, put a garden in, and then somebody stole it because it was hanging from the kayak boat launch. And anyway, I've, I've reconnected with Galveston Bay Foundation to, to see if they'd be interested, they are. But this is we, the lagoon is on city-owned land. And so before I take off and do anything on city-owned land, I wanted to have the consensus of council that you supported this. It, it really is not going to require a great deal on our part. But what they're going to do is come in and put in an oyster garden to check the compatibility of the water, et cetera, and see if it produces spat, which then, the area we've got identified for has got rocks around it, so it, it, it may just all take, take place. But I wanted to get y'all's approval, since it is on city land.
This is just for discussion, right?
Well, let me rephrase, anybody got an objection to it?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, well, go ahead and don't come after me later.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I would support it.
Yeah, I, I.
For sure, I would support it.
New source. New source for lunch.
Yeah. Uh, but it would be great to get some testing done to see, you know, we have the right flows, you know, if this is really going to be a viable situation. And I believe that we have some water quality folks in-house that can be able to do that at Galveston Bay Foundation, so that would be very helpful.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're on their way to do an assessment. And, and as soon as I hear, we have to give you updates.
And I will say that, that the oyster gardening is great, but you must have the marsh as well. And so it's a living shoreline that we would like to create.
That's, that's part two. I thought we'd get part one first.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Ten point one, routine business, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, city Seabrook C I P projects, economic development updates, and the city Seabrook active grants.
All right, Mayor and Council, about 146, I feel like I have nothing to report. Just on the 146, we have been going back and forth with Text Dot. So as you know, we were talking early on about trying to have a ribbon cutting at the top of the bridge before the highway opened. That became quickly a, kind of shunned off by Text Dot. Recently, the mayor was speaking with Baytran, our regional transportation partner, and once the highway opened, there was a discussion about having some type of celebration or event for the highway opening. We've been talking about that. Late Friday, we got information from Text Dot's P I O that they now want to jump back in and do something as far as an event, they're calling it a milestone celebration. So as of late today, I think we're planning on the city still holding something that's more city-related, elected official-related, let Text Dot do theirs, but April 1st, at this point, is, seems to be the date that both parties are agreeing on, so.
It's going to show up.
We'll have, yeah.
Nobody else.
And, and we picked that date first, just because I thought it was funny. But anyway, I'll, I'll let you know what we find out, it's, it's been ever-changing every day, so, but we'll, we'll get on your calendars, April 1st. Right now, we're looking at doing something probably at Tucky Seafood or on lunchtime, for sure. And then we'll let you know what Text Dot's coming up with on the 146 project. If you drove in today, the picture's on your screen, we got a call from the project manager that said the pavers were going in, so this is part of this Weber contract, that they'll get the pavers in before those decorative bollards and some of the other features go in. Whenever they're checked it out, everything's looking good, so they're having supplies delivered and, and we will still have those alternate lane closures. So if you get gripes about the lane closures, this pattern goes down a good portion of the frontage road, so there will be some additional lane closures for this portion of the cleanup. This is similar to what we reported last time, haven't gotten any new updates on the Red Bluff Spencer Project. I see that they've kind of stopped at setting the, the rebar out there, so if we get anything additional on this project, I'll let you know. And then grants, just wanted to, hadn't really reported on this, and you've recently approved the top three here, so we've had two from P D for ballistic shields and bulletproof. And then tonight, you approved the network switches, that's about 138,000. And then our ongoing grants that our departments and finances handling is the ARPA funds, which did the water line at Taylor Lake. We've got a little over a million dollars in generators that we're still waiting to get final approval. And then last meeting, the resolution that you approved, we submitted to Harris County Partnership Grant, which is a 50/50, and that's for North Meyer. So that portion from Harris County, it's a total of $8 million project, would be $4 million from Harris County if approved. And those would be coming out of the certificates of obligation. And really nothing else. I've got on there, I know, Councilor Rasko, you asked about economic development, we've had no further C O's since last, so no activity in that front.
Is the taco place open yet?
No, not yet.
Ten point two, strategic plan update.
All right, Mayor and Council, trying to get you guys quarterly updates on your strategic plan. If you recall, we met out at the Girl Scout camp some time ago, put in the new strategic plan. So I'll run through very quickly some highlights of the items that we successfully accomplished to date. So one of our main initiatives was economic development. At that time, we were focused on trying to still get a grocer into town besides our current, or at least getting an upgrade. We've had conversations with Kroger and H E B. There is nothing that we got from either one of those grocers that we can put on the table. So there's some things that their real estate office is looking for, and at this point, they're, they're still interested, but there's nothing as far as pre-assistance that we can put on the table. So we'll continue to pursue them, but those couple of meetings that we had with those individuals did not produce anything that we could come back to council and, and start. Initiative two, on a program for promoting existing businesses, we're members with the Bay Area Houston C V B, and we've been working with their representative on a support local business sticker program. So the State of the Bay that's coming up, they're probably looking to do some highlights on this, but we're trying to get some type of distinguished Seabrook shop local sticker that would go on businesses to kind of give them some promotional, and then we can work with the C V B as well as additional promotional over there. On the E D C side, we've been working in-house to build a new business welcome program, which would consist of making contact with, we get a certificate of obliga, or certificate of occupancy, reaching out to those businesses, introducing them to our staff, if they need to have a roundtable further on different resources that they need, reaching out to them in that capacity. And then E D C strategic plan initiative was also brought up on trying to make some type of quarterly or biannual contact with the businesses. So when the E D C plan comes over to you guys, we'll be building some type of hit list to make sure that we go out and make contact with the businesses. And then third initiative, establish a business signage program. This one will hopefully have out by April 2024. This is the program that is slotted on your C I P with E D C funding. And again, it's to get the gateway signs, hopefully directional signs within our districts, and then upgraded park signs throughout the community as well. City services, at that time, that was before we went into feasible, feasibility studies, so initiative one was improving city facilities. Police and court facility in the E M S had several items under that initiative. We've since gone through the bond proposition, so our focus right now is working on the E M S expansion, and we've worked with the architect. That proposal will be on your next agenda, so we'll get kicked off on that particular item. We're also internally working on a number of projects, so knowing that we're going to be staying in this building with P D, there's several upgrades that are kind of starting to bubble up, so that'll be part of your C I P process, that we'll start looking at improvement to existing city facilities. Initiative two, on producing high-quality services through local government best practices support and long-range staff planning. Internally, H R was a big player in this one, but we've done some things as far as making sure on that continuity of services, making sure that all our departments are getting the playbook. You know, if, as we say, if you're hit by a bus and trying to get somebody to step into your role, we've made sure that all those departments are in critical positions, have the, the manuals ready to go. We're also looking at, that should be succession plan, um, phase one, so this has been a very complex project of trying to get this up and going, but we feel like we've got a phase one successfully underway, we'll start meeting with directors. And again, looking long-term into the future of our staff, being a small in company, it's, it's definitely critical that we have people in the pipeline ready to go, and we're working towards that. Lastly, on optimizing our technology systems, this has been an ongoing desire for our directors to get the newest technology, but not overspend in this area. So we're working through auditing and making sure that we don't have any of the overlap that would be any kind of waste in that area. Engagement and branding, we looked at the promotion enhancement of city signage again, so this ties back to the R F Q that'll go out. Initiative two is the update of the city website and city partner pages to streamline access to city information. So I believe in some city update emails, I've, I've kept you guys abreast, we are in the middle of doing a city website update with our current provider. So Amanda and her team are working with Civic Plus. There'll be a fresh look and coming probably at the end of May, new colors, new design. Directors are going through the pages, refreshing those, if there's any old information, we're getting all that information updated. We also looked at a feature that we're adding on, which is a city bot or A I feature for chat. If you've been on different websites, you'll notice that, that'll come up. And it'll help the public, instead of have to meander through menus and pages, if they type in something, the A I system will get either an answer or get them to the right contact. So hopefully that transparency and, and ease with the public will be welcome. And three, enhance communication with the public, again, looking at the city bot, but also new communication software that allow a texting feature. Public Affairs is also, also implemented a new software program that will scan across all public media platforms. So in other words, if we've got something that's going on in Seabrook, instead of having to go to each platform, Public Affairs will get alerts across all of those platforms. And lastly, communi, municipal court has fully initiated their texting and chat features as well. So on the technology side, there's a lot of improvements in different areas that has been taking place. Lot on engagement and branding when we did our plan, enhancing communication with the public. In continuation of that, hopefully you guys have heard of, say, Rave, it's like our Swift 911, we use it a lot typically during hurricanes, but this allows for emergency notifications or just different notifications. It does have a texting feature, an effort not to overtext our customers that are in that database, there are just certain communications that we're using that on. And again, that software that we're doing across for the social media, also wanted to highlight with our new chief, we're kind of stepping it up in the community outreach program, so we're trying to enhance that communication with the public, or with the public as well. Customer service engagement, again, re, tapping on, we believe the city bot chat feature will be significant. And the bullet point there is a little off, but if you guys are familiar, we have what's called a request tracker, so if our community wants to submit a request, there's a place in the website, you have to log in, it's a multiple-step process. So again, the city bot hopefully is going to be a good improvement, you get on homepage, comes up, just like Chat G P T, you type in whatever you want to type in, and it'll take them directly to where they need to be. So that will be hopefully coming in at the end of May. Quality of life initiatives that we put in place, plan and provide for increased water access. So we jumped on the Bayside Park kayak install, we talked about Taylor Lake, and that's still on your C I P, however, if you followed where the Taylor Lake water line came in, that became the construction staging site, so that one's now postponed. And then as recap, Text Dot worked with us, and they've communicated the best usable design, and they are permitting on that feature. Initiative two, improve and enhance the park's open space and expand the trail network and security. I think there's been a lot of success in this, we got the Berm Trail, and we did successfully get the city, put in the concrete trail over to the intermediate school, and then our partnership last year with Harris County to get the East Meyer sidewalk completed. We have several other on the C I P that we'll continue to work towards, but those were successes in the last year. Cameras, we've got added several locations around particularly Metter Park, and our growth of over 30 of the 911 markers along the trail. In addition, the police department is stepping up in their pipe, bike patrol division with the number of miles that we have in the trail system. Quality of life continuing initiative, an adaptive reuse of the wastewater treatment plant, this was a goal of council, so we've proceeded on, the wastewater plant's coming near completion. You guys approved the proposal for the demolition plans, and we'll be going out for an R F Q for a project designer for that public space. Initiative four, we talked about citywide beautification, and at the time, we were just bringing on a second code enforcement officer. So the postcard to the left is what was sent out to our residents here not too long ago. They're also working on a video campaign to help the public as well, educate them about common nuisances. And, you know, I think between the two employees, there's really been a, a step up as far as, certainly on our caseloads and contacts with the public in trying to really satisfy that objective. Substandard buildings, Sean has been diligently working on a number of substandards, we've had one demolition in Old Seabrook, and several that are in the pipeline or in the process. And lastly, infrastructure, establishing the long-term prioritization, we talked here recently about pavement when we looked at the. Uh, we talked here recently about pavement when we looked at the debt. So we've successfully implemented, uh, with the AI technology, a draft pavement management program, looking at that long-term so we don't lose sight of all our street infrastructure, uh, into the future. Successful integration of, uh, other projects that we pulled out of the water rate study and put into your CIP. Um, we've looked at the successful completion of our Taylor Lake water line and moving on the Old Seabrook drainage project, study, um, project. Lastly, is, um, we talked about the, at that time, the water rates are continuing to go up. Uh, can we look for other water sources? So you guys, we're in a active, uh, proposal with Cobb Finley and have some meetings going on in the background with, uh, partners that are out of the southeast plant. Um, in addition to that, um, we are very happy to, uh, that we're getting farther along on the interconnects, which really fortifies our existing water, uh, network. And that is it. Any questions?
Anybody? Thanks, Gail. Ten point three, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and Council, the next meeting is scheduled for April 2nd at 6:00 PM.
Mayor? I have one thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item 6.3 for discussion again.
It's a waste of time, isn't it? You let it go for a couple hundred bucks. It's up to you. You can put it on your agenda.
Yeah, she's making a motion to reconsider tonight, and, and I've advised Jackie that if she doesn't get that, you know, a second or it fails, that she can always avail herself of the normal channels for requesting a future agenda item.
Okay.
To reconsider 6.3.
No, no, I don't think that's. I can't second it, but.
Yeah, I mean, and if they're in a second, it, it fails for lack of a second.
I would, I would second it. I would second it. Okay, fails. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Seven fifty-two.